Fran's comments and incorporated them and sent you all an updated version of each of the chapters.
That's what we have here?
I don't know what you have there.
This is the red line.
They're all red line.
We're on.
Okay, so any comments on, on chapter five? Our Fran's comments were to remove the name of the administrator, which is in 5.2B. The definition in 5.2G is circular because it's the definition of ESCO and it has ESCO in the definition. That has been corrected. And then her third comment was in 5-3B where supplier first letter is uppercase.
These are not correct.
As it turns out, the code for any term that is defined in a chapter, each instance of that term in the chapter should have its first letter capitalized. So you will see supplier with a capital S and you'll see the other definitions also with the first letter capitalized. So any comments on chapter five?
Yes.
Okay.
5.8.
Eight.
5.8 reporting, who are we reporting to? Let me see what's why. And your reports shall be filed with the village by whom? I don't know who's filing these reports?
I believe that the reports are supposed to be filed by the CCA administrator.
5.8. So should that be somewhere?
I will look into that. I'll first confirm that they're doing it.
Yes, my question was reporting by who? I assume.
Finally our annual report?
What's that?
Something about secret.
Annual reports from, I guess from the CCA.
And the content of the annual report is in B. Number of consumers served, number of customers, consumers canceled, blah, 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 blah. I'll look into that.
Maybe this should be annual reports by, from CCA.
Right, from the CCA administration. Okay, any other comments?
I have just, most of my comments were just small edits that kind of would help it read.
Can you start?
Okay, all right, so under legislative findings, A. Okay.
Sorry, I should say one other thing. Unless it's in red line, it's the original chapter that was passed by the village board in 2017.
Okay, well, I printed this out based on the latest thing that you sent.
That's okay.
So, okay. Okay, so let's see, one, two, three lines down at the end. I think we should just eliminate as well as and just do and.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna leave that as it is.
Okay.
And the reason is of the four chapters that we're reviewing tonight, the only one that would require SECRA potentially is this chapter. So the more changes we put into this chapter, the more likely it may be that the chapter will require a SECRA. So I'm trying to keep the changes to this chapter to a minimum.
Okay. I thought the second sentence just read awkwardly and I didn't really understand it. Among the initiatives that may advance these objectives in New York is community choice aggregation, comma, a policy that empowers local governments to determine the source of electricity and/or natural gas on behalf of its residents and small businesses, comma, and then and or, no, you don't need a comma, and reflect local resources priorities and challenges instead of reflecting because the form of the verb reflect doesn't really line up with the rest of the sentence. See what I mean?
Yes, I do.
I think if you just take reflecting out and do and reflect, then it makes a little more sense.
Actually, it shouldn't be and reflect, it should be.
Or to reflect.
Empowers local governments. Sorry, if the, if the comma is removed, then reflecting makes sense.
Small local businesses reflect on local resources.
Yeah.
Drop the comma.
Drop the comma.
Okay, so in B. All right, this chapter establishes the authority for the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees. Doesn't need a comma there, eliminate that comma.
Sorry, in connection with the implementation of a CCA program.
Right, that's all one clause.
In connection with, which is why it has commas on other sentences. Establishes the authority for the Village of Cold Spring Board of Trustees to acquire utility data to select through competitive solicitation, energy suppliers on behalf of default consumers within the jurisdictional boundaries. So the chapter establishes the authority in connection with the implementation of a CCA program that I think is properly within commas.
Oh, all right. Establish the authority to, then you could do a colon, acquire utility data, select through competitive solicitation, an energy supplier on behalf, well, I don't know, they're small edits. But I found also just right at the end of it that fulfilling an important public purpose was kind of redundant. You already say that. As a result, consumers will have the opportunity to lower and stabilize their energy costs, comma, spur local clean energy innovation and investment, comma, and reduce their environmental impact, thereby fulfilling the purposes of this chapter.
And an important public purpose. I guess the purpose is a.
And fulfill, yeah, and fulfill.
It's fulfilling.
Fulfilling the purposes of this chapter and.
Fulfilling the purposes of this chapter.
And fulfilling an important public purpose. Two different things we're fulfilling.
I don't know, it just read as redundant to me, so. But.
Well, you could say fulfilling both and then name them, but it's already. It's legal least, so it's supposed to be choppy and everything.
We're not supposed to understand.
No, it is very choppy. I have a general comment about the whole thing, there's thousands of commas that are missing in this whole thing.
This was done under your watch.
I know.
Okay.
But I have a problem with that, I'm starting not with this one so much, but with the others.
Okay.
Get to it, but.
Okay, and then down on 5.2B. I think that before CCA administrator, there needs to be, start the sentence with the.
No, no, these are definitions and the term that is being defined is CCA administrator.
Okay.
Gonna make the article.
Definition, definitions do not have articles introducing them.
Okay. All right, well, that was, those were my only comments on that. I just, I was just hoping that that would read a little easier. I was just trying to edit, make it.
Steve, any comments?
I have none on the CCA.
Well, Dave pointed out here.
Yeah, and I will.
Is that our annual report of the village?
No, no, I believe it is the CCA report.
Okay, is that from the lawyer or something?
Is that from the lawyer?
CCA.
It's from the CCA.
This is, CCA put this in here or we put this, this is our line.
This was what we got from you.
Okay.
So I thought that you got this verbatim from the CCA.
No, this is mostly Beacon's stuff, so, that we got from, Beacon's agreement with the CCA.
Okay.
Anyway.
The next one is nine. This one has been totally rewritten. This is based upon New York State model for Code of Ethics. And the introduction, as I said in my email, the introduction, the first portion is a resolution that would be used to pass this by the village board. So the code itself begins with the title of chapter nine.
Does this resolution have to be done before we finish the lawsuit?
No, this resolution would be done when, after we have the, the public hearing and everything has been settled, then there will be resolutions.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Fran had some comments on chapter nine. There's in section two, definitions. And I noticed that, okay, in definitions there there's the definition board and it just means the governing body of a municipality and any municipal administrative board. And then it's, for example, planning board, joint board of appeals. And for example, a phrase is not meant to be a complete list of all of the entities that are covered under board. So I'm, my, my response to Fran is instead of listing them all, I think it's appropriate to just list the few that we have here. The second comment that Fran had was on section 15. And section fifteen.
It was 5A.
Pardon me, I'm sorry, five, thank you Fran. Section five. It says. And it's 5A. Whenever a matter requiring exercise of discretion, perhaps before, either been, blah, 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 in which he or she is deemed to have an interest, the municipal officer or employees shall disclose in writing the nature of the interest. And Fran asked if this could be an email. My interpretation was that it should be a hard copy mail with a signature as opposed to an email. I'm not going back to legal counsel on that, but I think that's what they, they would say.
All right, for a matter such as this, I think you would need a letter.
Yeah.
Do we want to then clarify in hard copy writing or in writing with an original signature or something to that effect? Or do we just, I mean, I'm fine reading it if you think that's clear enough.
I think it's clear enough. Do you think it's clear enough? It's the last line in section 5A.
I'd like it to be clarified, but I don't want to get legal on that. I mean, to me in writing at this point, this day and age could, could mean email?
I.
I mean.
I don't, I don't think.
I'm old enough to think it doesn't, but there are generations under me, me think it does.
What do you think? The rest of you?
I think if we don't clarify it, it could lead to trouble down the road.
Okay, how would you restate it?
Disclose in a written letter.
Yeah.
That's good. The nature of the interest.
Written and signed letter.
Yeah.
I found the typo on this, but it's been corrected since I read it.
Oh.
In the second county was a Q or something? The second paragraph of the whereas.
Beginning, you didn't need a mother of the whereas.
Requires the governing body of each county, but in the copy I was reading on my computer.
It was a Q.
It was a Q, so that's been fixed.
Okay.
That's good.
Also in section 15. The, the first was in 15A. It starts off with O and it should be no.
Yep.
That's been corrected.
Good.
And in section 17. Number C. I was missing the, the number 75. Where is the annual aggregate value of 75? And now it says 75 left for an, 75 right for an dollars or more.
Where are we, 17?
Seventeen.
C.
Yep. I had a question about the first one, the fourth whereas, I was going to put it actually adopted by the governing body by the governing body of a municipality. So we don't have to say the village there or something like that?
There would be, just a second.
Okay.
The, where.
The fourth whereas, the code of ethics.
Just the resolution will not be included in the code. It's something that the village has to pass to.
But in the fourth whereas, a code of ethics adopted by the governing body of a municipality. Do we have to say by the village there or is it just kind of like the New York State's describing how you're supposed to do it in this line?
I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay. Because this is like taken right out of their instructions or something, like that's the way it reads. God, we're binding this down, it must set forth standards. Are we just explaining why we have to do it there? Just for.
I believe that it's, it's explaining why we're doing it.
I see.
But I will check to see whether or not it needs to, I mean, the fifth paragraph definitely says Cold Spring.
This isn't any kind of an edit, it's just really more of a comment that stems from one of those webinar, NICOM webinar things that I did once regarding ethics. And it does, this doesn't address open meetings law and quorums outside, you know, outside of the.
Right, and it wouldn't.
Thank you.
Okay.
That's not ethics. Ethics is how we behave, how we govern. What you're describing would be policy or as far as the, the meetings law, that's, that's a law of the state of New York. It's not how we think and how we act.
Right, the only reason that it, that it kind of popped up in my mind is that it was, it was part of this ethics conversation. So. That's all. So if we don't need it in there, we don't need it.
I don't think it is appropriate here, someplace else.
Okay, yeah.
At the beginning, the model code of ethics, second whereas. The third line down, there is a one after the word district that refers to something that is sort of in the middle of nowhere. And there's nothing that refers to.
The footnote.
The footnote, yes. So I don't know what that, whether there is a footnote or should be or. Sorry, I didn't catch that one before, it just sort of popped up today.
Okay, got it.
Will the definitions be formatted the same as the rest, like just what I have here? There's no condensed, it's kind of, there's no letter, it's like different than the other chapters, the way it's laid out, the way the definitions are.
What I think needs to be done for the definitions is they need to be made uppercase without quotes.
Right, yeah.
And I'll take care of that.
Nine, seven.
Hold on just a second. Section nine, seven.
I have to read this over again, but I had my notes, could you explain what this means? Code's prohibition, prohibition on use of municipal positions, disclosure requirement.
Dave, excuse me, which paragraph were we talking about?
Section seven.
Thank you.
I'm assuming you mean paragraph A, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. What it says is the prohibitions on the use of a municipal position, disclosure requirements or requirements relating to recusal and abstention shall not apply to the following matters. Adoption of the municipality's annual budget, any matter requiring the exercise of discretion that directly affects any following groups of people or a lawful class of such groups, municipal officers, employees, residents or taxpayers or the general public, or does not, any matter that does not require the exercise of discretion. So you are prohibited, a municipality officer or employee as well, officer or employee and boards. There are certain situations under which they are prohibited from participating. As I read this, it says that does not apply to one, two, or three.
Does not apply with respect to matters requiring the exercise of discretion that directly affects any of the following groups. That's right, maybe I got confused. Shall not be, it shall not apply with respect to the following matters. Any matters requiring the exercise of, so it's, should not apply to matters requiring the exercise of discretion that directly affect all municipal officers or employees, all resident, I, you know, I.
Does it define what exercise of discretion means? I'm not really sure what that means.
Seems like a situation that they're describing that we should know what they're talking about.
Okay, if you go to section six, this may help. No municipal officer or employee may participate in any decision or take any official action with respect to any matter requiring the exercise of discretion, including discussing the matter and voting on it when he or she knows or has reason to know that the action could confer a direct or indirect financial or material benefit on himself or herself, a relative or any private organization in which he or she is deemed to have an interest.
Except in these situations.
Except in those situations, right.
So when we're voting on annual budget, we don't, we can't, we can't recuse ourselves or abstain?
If you have an interest in something. So for example, in the annual budget, there may be an item about repainting the village hall. And I may have an interest in that because my sister owns a paint store. So if we were discussing it as a board matter, I would need to recuse myself from that. If we're doing it in the budget, I don't have to. That's how I interpret that. So, so another example, what might be in the, what this says is that, I believe there is a section that says that a person cannot, a municipal officer or employee cannot have reporting to them or relative.
So back to number two again, so if you went up top and it's, you know, what you just read and then you come down to the bottom and it says shall not apply to these and then it goes any matter requiring the exercise of discretion, which seems to me to be what A is saying.
Any matter that does not require the exercise of discretion. That does not require the exercise of discretion.
Where is it saying that?
That's in three. So seven.
That's in what?
Seven, A, three. Go to section seven.
Yeah, but seven, A, two is saying any matter requiring this and then it goes to all municipal officers, so, but it doesn't say any exercise of discretion, any matter requiring the exercise of discretion that directly affects any of the following groups. So any matter that does, of discretion that directly affects all municipal officers, employees, if we just use the I.
Now, is that, when it says all municipal officers or employees and all residents, does it necessarily mean it has to be the whole group? Or not, not taking them individually?
Well, it says such groups, so I would imagine it's broken down.
So this code prohibition on use of a municipal position, the municipal positions are defined in section four.
Is this?
Section four. No municipal officer or employee shall use his or her municipal position or official powers and duties to secure a financial or material interest for himself or herself, a relative or any private organization in which she, he or she is deemed to have an interest. That, so it's. So, I'm sorry, we're back to seven. So a municipal position would be a municipal officer or employee.
So I read this as the prohibitions, you know, these three different types of prohibitions don't apply if the matter requiring discretion involves the, all of the officers and employees or all of the residents, so it would be like.
I don't interpret it, I, I.
It doesn't say if.
It's on the, on use of a municipal position. So if you are an officer or an employee, the disclosure requirements and requirements relating to recusal and abstention shall not apply with respect to the following matters. So one does not, an employee or an officer does not have to recuse or disclose when adopting the municipality's annual budget.
Right.
The municipal officer or employee does not have to disclose or recuse on any matter requiring the exercise of discretion that directly affects any of the following groups of people or a lawful class of people. So if the, if the board, if, if the board is typically the only group, sorry. Typically, an action that affects all municipal officers and employees or all residents or taxpayers is an action that stems from the village board. None of us individually can take an action that will affect all municipal officers or employees or all residents or taxpayers of the municipality. So.
So, so.
That's cleared everyone out on your head, but it's absolutely totally confused by.
Totally confused. So now I'm, I'm trying to think of an example to get.
It makes sense when I read A and then one, that makes sense to me. But then when number two doesn't.
So we, we can't abstain from, you know, voting on something, say for example, we say that all, what we did, we voted to give ourselves a raise. It affects all of us.
Yes.
We can't abstain from that because it's, it takes care of all of us, it's like a.
You are not required to abstain. So this is the.
Or recuse ourselves.
You are not required, we are not required to recuse or abstain in those situations.
Or if we say we want to lower the taxes, we're, we're beneficiary of that too.
Exactly.
As long as we don't say I want to lower the taxes on 5 High Street.
Right, that one, that one would be a problem.
That would be a problem.
Actually, it wouldn't fall under this because it's all residents, it's, it's apply us.
If we say it for everybody, then we can't, we don't have to recuse or abstain?
Yes, that's how I interpret that.
That is sort of.
Uh, number four, nepotism. I just had a, had a question on, uh, you know, there, we've had a number of instances where that happens, and I don't know, that's, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't give you any flexibility in this.
Where, where are you? It's not four.
Uh, section fourteen.
Fourteen.
Nepotism. Um, we've had Ed Trimble, and he's had his son work for us, uh, he worked, uh, his cousin Ken worked for him. Um, Mayor Phillips hired his son, uh, there's no, there's nothing in here that, you know, unless, you know, there should have, unless there's no option, or there's.
Except as otherwise required by law, um, you can't hire, um, and you can't directly supervise.
Right.
So we, we can't talk about the previous water, wastewater.
What's that?
We can't, I mean, what happened in the past.
I know, I'm not talking about the past, I'm talking about the future, and this would not, this doesn't give any flexibility to, uh, to a situation where we would want to.
Might need to do it again.
If, if there, there is a case, like where, like say Anthony, or my son was, uh, you know, somebody in water and we couldn't find somebody. This says you can't do that, there's no, there's nothing.
I understand the first one, which basically says you can't participate in the decision to appoint them or hire them. That's sort of clear, but then this, that's, I think we can, we can do without a problem, the second one says.
You can't supervise.
You can't supervise them, so if you were to say, hire your son, you might have to pass the supervision off to Marie, or to the.
Or someone else.
Someone else, maybe, maybe that.
But, um.
But that's gonna, that's, that's.
But does this, wouldn't this also apply to our judge and?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, I mean, why, there's no reason why Kathy should be working for him, there's no, but there's, what's the reason? I mean, if you're reading this, I'm not saying, whatever, I don't care, I mean, it's been going on, but there's nothing here that would allow him to do that, I mean, he would just.
In a south town like this, it's bound to happen.
Uh, what, what I will do on this one is I will consult with Judge Costello.
What's that?
I'll consult with Judge Costello.
So it starts off by saying, except as otherwise required by law, so I don't know where. What, what is otherwise required by law, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, required doesn't seem like it's giving you, uh, you know, an exception.
Where is the law gonna require you to?
Yeah, I don't know, because there's no reference, there's no reference here to where it might otherwise be required by law.
And I acknowledge it, this is the state model, this is not something that was developed, I guess.
So, but I think should be, and there kind of is, a, a way where there's some flexibility in our village, because I think in other laws, it's like, when we're hiring, or we're going out, we have to hire within the village.
Yeah.
But if there's no one in the village, then we can hire outside the village, there should be something like that for this, so that if you're hiring, you can, I think it's gonna limit.
Yeah, there should be, yeah, there should be some kind of a.
Well, there's a difference between nepotism and favoritism, uh, you, you know, I mean, if you look both those words up, they, it probably says, if you look up nepotism, it says favoritism, but that's, that's showing an undue or a.
Bias.
What's that?
Favoritism is a bias, nepotism is a relationship.
Right, but if you show favoritism by hiring your son over somebody else's son.
That would be a no-no.
Yes, but what if your son's more qualified than the other person, and he's the only applicant, it's still nepotism, so it's.
We should recuse yourself from the decision-making, right?
Now, technically, does Kathy, I mean, I know Kathy works for Tom and all that, but does Kathy really work? Does she answer to Jeff?
Supervised by Tom?
Does she answer to Jeff?
No.
I'd have to check to see, that's interesting, judge, the judge does not sign our time sheets. Our time sheets are signed by.
But he supervises their.
He supervises your.
He can give, sir, he tells us what to do in terms of, you know, the court.
Our assignments.
Yeah.
And the only reason I brought up Ed Trimble is we, you know, with no bag and eyes, that year you could hire your son, two years in a row. We did it last year, you can do it when we first got him, so, this wouldn't let me do that, which maybe, that should, I'm just bringing it up because those are things in the past we've done, and this would eliminate that, so.
Well, if someone had a problem with it, they can just go right back here, and then you'd have to let the person go.
Right. And unless Greg was the only person that could do a supervising, you know, then he shouldn't.
It's still happening.
Oh, she's still here?
Yeah.
I thought she went out.
No, she's coming back to school.
Oh, she's.
So John. Helping out with the base stuff.
I had a problem with that, but.
I do too.
But, with the week, so, but we should definitely not do that again.
Okay, uh, so I have a number of follow-ups on nine.
And then, uh, fifteen, um, oh, never mind, I think that was the type of the.
Yep, then no, it's no, right.
Supposed to be no, right?
Right, no municipal. And the, the word two, if you follow on that sentence, it says directly or indirectly to compel, two has been eliminated.
Right, yep, that one's true.
Anything else on this?
Can we go back just for, just for, um, say, for example, in the case of Tatiana, say, we were looking for some help, we put it in the paper, and nobody answers. And she's unavailable.
Right, that's why I think we should have something in there.
So at least if we can prove that we did due diligence or something.
And I think that's the same case with a number of things, if you're hiring, like any, you know, even though we have a, 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 a purchasing, you know, procedures or whatever, uh, policy, sometimes if it's only one person that bids on it, then there's a different way you can react.
Yes, we should be able to use people as we want to, and not have to discard them because of the nepotism thing, if they're the right person for the right thing.
Right, oh, yeah, I think so, yes, that's a tough. Uh, the, uh, the only question, I, you know, I just had a question, which doesn't, doesn't just dawn, it's all reading, at the posting for the, uh, update policy.
Uh, yes, it has to be given to every employee.
And we don't, do we do that, you know, in their package or anything?
I don't know about that, and it needs to be posted in each building.
Right, yeah.
And I think it is.
Okay, I just wanted to, that's something I don't remember doing with every, unless Jeff puts it in a package.
Yeah, Anne used to have a whole packet for new employees, I don't know, I mean, I remember when Mary was here, that was a procedure, I don't know what's in there, or what, you know, what actually gets done, or if it does get done, or it just.
Am I, oh, go ahead. Oh, I just had a suggestion in section fifteen, um, B, um, there are a whole lot of ors in there that you can get it, just get rid of. You don't have to, you know, it's defining a list of things that you do or don't do, because you don't need to have an or in between each one of them. No municipal officer or employee may act or decline to act in relation to appointing, hiring, promoting, you know, that or can go, promoting, discharging, discipline, disciplining, or in any manner changing the official rank, status, or compensation of a municipal officer, employee, applicant for a position as a municipal officer or employee on the basis of giving or withholding, giving, withholding, or neglecting to make any contribution of money, service, or any other valuable thing for political purpose.
Okay, so I've got, I've got one or in the second sentence.
That brings me to one, like, my comment I had at the beginning.
Hold on a second.
I had one on the fourth sentence, maybe.
Yeah, I've got that one also at the end of the first sentence, yeah.
Well, the rules of grammar are, every or on there should have a comma. You, any, any conjunction, I wrote a list, you know, and, for, nor, but, or, yet, so, all those are supposed to have a comma in front of them, that's how.
Okay.
That's correct English, but I mean, are we gonna go through this whole thing and, and edit on that level? Because it's just, just, everything I read is filled with this, where they choose to or not to.
If you look at B, it now says, no municipal employee or officer, no municipal officer or employee, that is a defined term, may act or decline to act in relation to appointing, hiring, promoting, discharging, disciplining, or in any manner changing the official rank, status, or compensation of any municipal officer or employee.
You can take that or out. Um, municipal officer, employee.
That's a defined term.
It's a defined term, we can't take it out.
Marie, should they start with a capital N?
It, they all now have in the, in the version that I sent you, municipal officer or employee is, is a defined term, so, M is capitalized, O is capitalized, and E is capitalized. Or an applicant for a position as a municipal officer or employee, comma, on the basis of giving, withholding, or neglecting, withholding, comma.
Well, you got a paragraph B in there, there's giving or withholding, no comma, withholding or neglecting, no comma, to make any contribution of money.
I've got giving, comma.
No comma or service or.
I've got giving, comma, withholding, comma, neglecting, to make any contribution of money or service, or any other valuable thing, or any political purpose.
I think this, I think we need to leave the or before neglecting.
Yes, I, I agree on that one, but the one before service can go. Money, service, or any other valuable thing.
So giving, comma, withholding, comma, or neglecting, to make any contribution of money, comma, service, or any other.
Okay, anything else?
And then I have, uh, on, uh, section twenty, any municipal employee who violates this code may be censured, fined, suspended, or removed from office, employment, in a manner provided by, by law. So, so what is the law, or who is enforcing this, and who is, who is censoring, finding, or suspending?
I believe it is the village who would censor, fine, suspend, or remove. Um, and your question is, where is the law?
But we have, not that, or, I, I guess what I was thinking too also is, we don't have, we don't have a, I forgot, I guess I must not have written this down, um, oh, yeah, nine eighteen, we don't have, we don't have a board.
Yeah, well, this requires that one be appointed as necessary. There is hereby established a board of ethics for the municipality.
Right.
The Board of Ethics, and.
Three members?
Shall consist of at least three members, and a majority of whom shall not be officers or employees of the municipality, but at least one of whom must be a municipal officer or employee. Members of such board of ethics shall be appointed by the village board of trustees, serve, serve at the pleasure of the board of trustees, and receive no compensation. The board of ethics shall render advisory opinions to the officers, employees, the village of Cospring with particle, with respect to cardinal, of the general municipal law and this code. Such advisory opinions must be rendered per so, blah, 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 blah.
So this is saying we have to have a board, it's not like we should have one, whether or not they're used all the time, that we should establish one, not just when we need one. And then, to, to the enforcement part, it seems like that it would be on the recommendations, or, I mean, if you're having a board of ethics, I would think they're the ones that are looking at violations to ethics, and they're the ones that would be making recommendations out of the village board.
I believe so, I believe that's how.
And that's how it works, I think that should be somehow in, in the enforcement, that, who's doing what. Because it's just, this is very ambiguous. Or maybe that doesn't go to the board, or enforcement, I guess it actually wouldn't be the, the board of ethics, it would, but the board of ethics would.
Make a recommendation to the village board.
Right.
Who would accept it, and the village board is responsible for taking the action.
Right, exactly.
Okay, anything else in nine?
From page nine.
You know?
No, good.
Next one is.
You know, just another point to the, to the commas, you know, if you look at section twenty enforcement, any municipal officer or employee.
A municipal officer.
Or employee is.
Is a defined term.
It's a defined term, who violates this code may be censured, fined, suspended, no comma, or removed, so there should be a comma there, from office, comma, or employment in a manner provided by law, there should be a comma, but, but.
Any municipal officer or employee who violates this.
Second one.
May be censured, fined, suspended, or removed from office, or employment, removed from office or employment in a manner provided by law. It's, it's not, it's removed from office or employment, it's removed from office and employment, right?
Okay, I think that looks good.
Yeah. It's confusing. It's not English.
It's lawyer English.
Actually, it's, it's, it's very, very specific in English.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
On the, um, just the, the section eighteen on the Board of Ethics, the less.
Go back to the.
I'm sorry, the less.
I stored them, I've got.
This is, you don't have to really look at this, it's just sort of a question. Um, the Board of Ethics may make recommendations with respect to the drafting and adoption of a code of ethics, which is this, so does that mean we need the Board of Ethics before we adopt this?
No, I think we go in with this.
Chicken and egg situation.
Yes, that's what it is, okay. So that takes care of. I'm awake, you got a book over there?
No, I didn't bring my book.
Oh, Michael.
Take enough.
Next is alarms. Okay, please read that. Fran had a comment on alarms, alarm, now, this, this chapter was modified to be gender neutral, to remove fees, to remove fees to master fee schedule, to state that the master fee schedule is modified by a resolution of the village board, to change reference from the building inspector to the code enforcement officer, as well as some other changes that were recommended by John. Fran had a comment that wherever you see fire inspector, should, should it be changed to fire inspector slash code enforcement officer? My response to Fran was, that's an additional set of responsibilities that the village would place on the code enforcement officer. That is something that the village board is going to have to decide, if that's what they want to do.
Well, a person can be both, but doesn't have to be, like, you can have a separate fire inspector and a separate.
Right, but we would have to say fire inspector slash code enforcement officer, wherever you see fire inspector here. Is, is a contract with the code enforcement officer broad enough such that it can accept these additional responsibilities?
I think so, I think it has it in it, that's what he's supposed to be doing, fire inspection.
Okay.
No, it's originally in his position, right?
Yeah.
Or the position was both.
So, so we need fire inspector, it does not just totally mean the code enforcement officer.
No, no, we can't say that, we would have to say fire inspect, inspector or code enforcement officer. We don't leave anything to indicate.
But, but in most of those, I'm not sure where the situation is, it is also the fire, the chief is also.
It doesn't talk about the chief.
Talk about the chief, but doesn't the chief by law have no responsibilities?
No, there is a person that's appointed as a fire inspector, it need not be the chief.
But that's a, that's a license from the state, that's why, right?
I believe you have to be, yes.
So it's not automatic, just because you're.
Oh, it was just a general comment on the whole.
Just because you're fire, fire chief, you're not automatically.
It was a general comment on, on the whole chapter, and I think it may be what I had added, instead of just going through the whole thing, let's say, should we, uh, in the definitions add, um, add a definition for fire inspector that says, to be understood to include code enforcement officer. Or that may make it easier.
I.
Or not.
I, I, I don't think that, I don't think we should do that, um, I, I think. I, I think that we need to say the fire inspector or the code enforcement officer. I, I don't think in definition we can say that the fire inspector is equal to the code enforcement officer.
I think, I think code enforcement covers it, and if we do hire someone, or if we were to hire someone, we could have them as a deputy code enforcer, instead of as a separate, yeah.
Now, the last I remember is that Ralph Bloom was the fire inspector, that's the last person I remember having that title.
I think Stephen Smith did it too.
Okay.
I don't know who did it when, but.
Steve Smith did it when we were, when we first stepped in Gotham Pops across this way.
And I think Ray Valentine did it also at one point, I don't think we ever.
Ray, Ray Valentine?
Yeah.
Oh.
When he's a little. I'm not sure.
Or Tom?
No, Ray.
Right, okay.
He's still, I think he's still part of the fire company, maybe.
Okay, so, the first, um, um, comment from Fran, Fran, was in definitions. There's a definition for a central alarm station, and it states that it is a private firm that owns or leases, that runs the central alarm station. And in looking at the definition of a central alarm station, it is identified as, it is defined as something that is run by a private firm, differentiating it from nine one one. So, when I had an alarm system in one of my houses, I had a contract with a central alarms, uh, s- uh, station, and it was, um, fire, it was, uh, police, um, it was whatever I, I signed up for. So, the, the central alarm station as a definition, I think, needs to remain in there. What is not identified anywhere in here is nine one one.
As I look through the definition of alarm devices, it says, uh, any device which when actuated, actuated by a fire or other emergency requiring fire or police or EMS response, and then the last line goes to, um, transmit a pre-recorded message, um, to a central alarm station, or directly to the fire company, police department, or EMS. And I don't know if it goes directly to anybody, does it go to a nine one one station? And then they transmit out to a fire company, and I wasn't sure that, uh, that needs to be included there, because I don't think it goes directly to a fire, I think it goes to a central nine one one station in Carmel or wherever up here.
And then they, and then they relay the.
Yeah, they relay to whatever.
But I don't know that all alarm devices do that.
Or maybe, maybe no alarm, I don't know if any alarm device, I mean, if you pick up the phone and call nine one one, that's obviously different, that, maybe alarm devices don't do that at all, maybe they just go to, I don't know what they do, I don't have.
So, you mean like, so if someone pulls an alarm in the school or something, it, it goes to some place like a.
Or if you're on your house.
Alarm station, a centralized facility, and they, they report it to the necessary.
Yeah, or does it go to?
Or does it go to nine one one?
Does it go to nine one one?
I don't know.
Well, nine one one's a call, isn't it, you have to actually get them on the phone and speak to them.
I, I don't know.
Yeah.
It might go to a central alarm station.
Yeah, a nine one one call? No, personally, it's, I know, because I called it by accident before. I was trying to call four one one back in the day to get some information, and, uh, I called nine one one. And they said, no, this is nine one one. And I had to explain what's its relation to.
What's your emergency?
Yeah, when people do that, I'm told, are used to, and they would hang up the phone because they're like, shit, I called nine one one instead, and they'd call you back immediately, because there's a problem, and, uh, who's an actual person on there, and then you'd say, oh, I called you by accident, but they have to call you back. Anyway.
So, I, I don't know what action, if any, needs to be taken in the definitions.
Me, okay, we're fine, we're fine.
Okay. Uh, Fran's second comment was in thirty-two dash four, there's a, uh, a language, um, the first sentence, any, any property owner or leasee of property in the village of Cold Spring, having on their premises, not his or its, uh, on their premises, an alarm device or system of alarm devices, shall apply to the licensing authority for permit to own or otherwise have such device on their premises. So, that has been changed. Intent to make it gender neutral didn't work well.
There is pretty neutral.
There is pretty neutral.
Let me switch today.
On, uh, the definition of the EMS, uh, like, Public County, or, or Phillips Town, I don't think it's just Phillips Town Volunteer, it's also, I think they have a paid sec.
They do it too.
The EMS star?
What's that?
EMS star, EMS star.
Yeah.
But I think it's all incorporated under Phillips Town Volunteer Ambulance Corps, um.
Because they have separate trucks, and I think they have separate budgets.
Do we need to be that specific when we, when we define EMS?
Um, let me just see how many, uh, instances we have.
Could be emergency ambulance services or something.
Yeah.
Or generic.
It turns out, the only place the phrase EMS is used is in the definitions. So, if we go to Phillips Town, uh, um, to the definition EMS, Phillips Town Volunteer Ambulance Corps, um, and, uh, what was it that you had suggested?
Oh, the private one, that's one.
Not to make it specific, it just have, uh, emergency.
Emergency medical.
Ambulance services.
Emergency medical slash ambulance service. Okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
I'm good with that.
Oh, I had a.
Thirty-two dash seven.
Thirty-two dash six.
Oh, I, I had something in thirty-two dash six that I, I think it needs to be clarified a little bit. Permits shall be required for alarm systems located in buildings of federal, state, or local governmental agencies. Do we need a comma there? Or authorities in public elementary or secondary schools and public libraries? And I would, my question was, do, um, does this apply to businesses too?
It says alarm systems located in buildings of federal, state, or local governmental agencies or authorities, public schools, public libraries.
No, it doesn't, it, it applies to, it applies to government.
Governmental buildings.
Schools, library, no, I.
But it's, it's talking about where.
But it's under fee exemptions, though.
Oh, okay.
So that wouldn't be, yes, there are buildings that are required to have, uh, a permit or. But since this is under the heading.
Oh, I see.
Fee exemptions, then the, there's no fees for federal, state, or local.
So, yeah, okay, so it's about the fee, it's not where permits are required.
Exactly.
Gotcha.
There is a lot of orders in there, again.
Well, yeah, and I thought it might read clearer. I thought it might read more clearly if there was a period after libraries, and, uh, delete and, and capitalize the S on said alarm systems, just start a new sentence there.
Or you can just say alarm systems.
Yeah, well, that too, yeah. Alarm systems shall meet, that makes, that's clear, because otherwise it's just kind of a run-on, it's, it's all one sentence.
Also, if you say secondary schools and public libraries and said alarm systems, yeah, it's really clunky.
I mean, it goes.
How do you want this changed?
Oh, okay, put a period after libraries.
Sorry.
Public library.
Right, that's not where you want to change. Permit should be, shall be required for alarm systems located in buildings of federal, state, or local government agencies or authorities, comma, or in public elementary or secondary schools, comma. And public libraries.
Period.
And said alarm systems.
No, period.
Period after the libraries.
And then delete and, and said, and capitalize A on alarm, starting a new sentence there.
I would leave the word said in there, because it refers back to the systems we're talking about.
Either said or alarm, start with one of those, I don't care.
Said alarm system shall meet the other requirements of the chapter, including liability of specific penalties or its violations, semi comma provided, however that such alarm system shall be exempt from permit fees, and other provisions shall be made direct in use, okay?
That's better.
Okay.
In thirty-two seven, there's also.
Stay on that one and go, go up to thirty-two dash five B, which is the line right above it. Our code said that there, says that there's no fee for renewal of, of fire, for, for renewal of alarm permits. Fran felt that there should be.
Well, I think there should be, I think if we're gonna have fee, I think it would be incorporated in a fee, a renewal fee for inspections.
Right.
Like, so it doesn't have to be here, I think it, uh, if we did start doing inspections, this would be for fires, if alarms are needed, that would be included, exits, whatever, would all be included, and you would pay, and that would be a, a new renewal, a yearly, a yearly permit fee.
Where do you get a permit for, like, if you have an alarm system in your house, where do you get the permit here?
I don't know if you.
I don't know anybody that has.
Need a permit, do you need a permit?
It says like, some permit fees.
Yes, you do need a permit, and there is a fine in our, in our sys, in our code that says if you have multiple false alarms.
Right.
Which happens.
Right.
You are subject to the, okay, so B should get deleted.
But, uh, I think I said, the, uh.
So, it's, so, yes, yeah.
Well, this, I put in a system, I didn't put it in, I built the house, and the system got put in by, uh, up in Hyde Park, and the company actually did all the permitting and everything, the homeowner, I don't wanna do with it necessarily, but, um.
But they could.
They could, I guess, yeah.
See, I found as I read this.
Someone needs to, I guess.
Uh, that this chapter talks about penalties for false alarms, but doesn't really say anything about who's required to get it, like, if you put a per, uh, an alarm system in your house, you need to get a permit, none of that, that doesn't really, I didn't find it to find it, um.
Yeah, that was one question I had too.
Yeah. Um, I guess it gets registered with wherever, whoever answers the alarm, whatever the outside company is.
Yeah.
If, if you have an alarm.
Part of the fee structure.
If you have an alarm system with a pilot company, they handle everything. They handle the installation, they handle all the calls. I don't know that you need a permit.
Well, I think that they, the alarm company dealt with all of that, when I had experience with it, I only had one, and, and the, but the homeowners paid for the package, and, and they had a legit alarm.
Yeah, I, I don't know that there's, there's.
Just to go beyond that.
A fee, a, a village fee for that.
Because when you took out of thirty-two dash five and fees, and you put into the master fee plan.
Yes.
Talked about, um, license and permit fees shall be required for residential, commercial, or residential, commercial slash residential and industrial buildings, and they're founded in the master, you took out the fact that there is a, a fee for residential.
So, maybe the first line should be license and permit, and, and permit fees are required.
Shall means must.
Shall be required.
Throughout the code, the word shall means must.
Shall be required, okay, that, which is fine, so.
But that, but maybe not fees, uh, license and permit shall be, I mean, license and permit shall be required, not fees. And then you could follow up, that license and permit fees are found in the master.
So, it's license.
Yeah.
And permit fees, they're two separate things, there's a license.
Permit fees are not what we're requiring, we're requiring a permit, right?
And then there is a permit fee to go.
Yes, we are requiring permits.
That's what I'm saying, it should be license.
Sorry, no, 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 it's, it's, I don't know that it's referred to as a permit versus a license.
But what do we want, we want a license, we want a permit, right?
Well, it can be called a license and then.
I see what you're saying.
No, license is different. A license would be somewhat like an electrician needs a license, and then you need a permit for the installation.
You just want the titles, license and permit.
So, basically, we wanna say if you're putting an alarm in your house, you need to have a permit.
Permit and permit fees shall be required for residential, commercial, commercial, residential, and industrial buildings, the permit and lis, and permit fees.
So, take all the word license and make it permit?
Yep.
Permit and permit fees.
It, it should just be the permit fees.
All right, so wait a minute, let me back up again. So, if you're putting an alarm system in your house, and I understand that the company who puts it in files everything, but shouldn't it somewhere say that? So, say, for example, Steve decides to put a, a alarm system in his house and hooks up to whatever, but doesn't.
Well, I think if you have, if, if a line, if a license and a permit are required, then you'd have to come to the village to get a permit, and in that permit would go to the building inspector, and the building inspector would then have to have that information. You'd be required to put that information on there. Okay, if you go, if you want to have a, you know, if you're doing a major electrical, then, and you come for a billing, or plumbing, you come for a billing permit, then you have to, you have to list the plumber you're using, and they'll have a license, so that would be.
So, if you go to thirty-two dash eight, um, all devices shall meet the C, the fire inspector may require inspection and approval of all, all alarm systems installed with the village of Cold Spring. Fire inspector may prescribe a certification form to be completed by licensees, certifying that an alarm system has been inspected and/or ma, maintained by the licensing, and the alarm system conforms to certain minimum standards. Let me see what it says. So, there is, there is no reference in the text to a license, other than we appointed that out, and that's been changed to permit.
So, now at thirty-two five, we're saying, well, thirty-two five's definitely, um, heading is fees. So, we probably need to put something other than fees in there.
Why would you, why would you do that?
So, we have to, if you.
If you look at thirty-two dash four, any property owner or leasee of property, having on their premises an alarm device or system of alarm device, shall apply to the licensing authority for a permit to own or otherwise have such a device on the.
Got it, okay.
So, it's covered there.
It's covered there.
And these, uh, is a, is a valid, uh, sub, a valid additional section.
Shall apply to the licensing authority, so who's the licensing authority? For permit to own or otherwise have such device? But do we, we, the licensing authority is the building inspector of the town?
Right above you, it's the village of Cold Spring, it's in the defined terms.
Thank you, okay. Marie, you've read this too many times, you're way ahead of me.
No, 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 no.
No.
In my ver, in my version, there's a capital L, A and a capital L, which meant it was a defined term.
Got it.
So, I'm, I'm cheating. Anything?
Thirty-two dash seven, there's a.
Oh, thirty-two dash seven.
The word therefore is left, it was spelled, the E off the end of it.
No, actually, that is, that is correct. T H E R E F O R, no A, it's correct, legalese.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I questioned it too, I said, the whole thing seemed awkward. Like, seriously.
Fran said, sorry, Fran had said that that was an awkward, um.
I was gonna take the word out, it's fine without it.
Therefore.
Um, but, um, thirty-two has been reviewed by John, and he hasn't dictated it, so.
All right, follow me.
All of the chap.
Check it out.
All of the chapters that you're reviewing have first been reviewed by John. Thirty-two twelve, so, um, if you wanna back up a minute, I have a comment about thirty-two uh, nine, I think that's. Okay.
Number C, if the fire inspector, comma, code enforce, code enforcement officer, comma,
this has to be changed, uh, because we decided that we're going to have fire inspector slash fire inspector, comma, building inspector, sorry, I have to figure out how it's gonna work, but.
I figured you were changing everything to just code enforcement officer, no.
No, I, I, I hesitate to do that.
Okay, I, I wasn't.
Okay. Okay.
I wasn't taking it.
You're on the Oars.
Right, I was, I was a little bit on the Oars, but I was also on the, on the tense of the word determine and shall. Because if shall means must throughout the code.
Yes.
I would just take shall out, if the fire inspector or Santa Claus or whoever determines that the alarm system is malfunctioning and causing dangerous situation for the members and equipment, blah, 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 the system shall be ordered. Shall determine doesn't, is not correct English there, that's all. Whoever is making this decision, if whoever is making this decision, whatever you wanna call them, determines that the alarm system is malfunctioning.
The, the word there is extraneous. Okay, good, good, got it. Anybody else for, uh, sorry, thirty-two dash thirteen, sorry, Steve.
Twelve, you said?
Twelve, thirteen.
Thirteen.
Twelve, twelve, twelve. Well, this is, again, a question, whoever group. Whenever any change occurs relating to the written information required by this chapter, the applicant or permitting shall give written notice thereof to the village board. Fran is recommending it be to the village clerk. How do people feel about that?
Yes.
Okay, and thirteen.
It was just a gender.
My genders didn't work here.
Thirteen C.
Thirteen.
C.
C. Upon completion of his, her, her investigation, the fire inspector shall make a determination which shall be final.
How about of an investigation?
This is the title, is investigation of violation. So it's upon completion of the investigation of, of violation.
Are you on C?
Oh, 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 yes, yes.
I'm on C.
On completion, oh, I see what you're saying.
Of an investigation, instead of his or he's she or.
They, that. The investigation.
On, upon completion of the investigation, everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I was wordsmithing this just a little bit. This section, number C. Um, it, I wasn't really clear when I first read it, which is final, the investigation or the determination? And once again, we're bumping up against the use of shall being must, meaning must. But then you go on to say later that it can be appealed. So if you're saying in C that shall equals must, and that it's final, but then can be appealed, it's not final.
Well, nothing, it, nothing is really final, 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 final.
Right.
So.
However.
I, I, I agree with you that the phrase which shall be final is, I think, a better phrase which is final.
Or which will be deemed final, could be that. And then, uh, in the next sentence, the fire inspector shall give notice of said decision to the person.
Oh, that makes sense, uh-huh.
Yeah. Uh, alleged to be in violation and to the party who made the report. Um, which initiated the investigation, might be clear if, after report, you just take out which and just put initiating the investigation. The fire inspector shall give notice of said decision to the person alleged to be in violation and to the party who made the report initiating the investigation.
I think that's less clear. I think the report which initiated the investigation is, I mean, at least for me, but I'm real brain dead at this hour.
Well, I don't know, to, as I was reading it, I was, once again, I wasn't really sure what we were talking about. Were we talking about the fire inspector, or were we talking about the investigation?
The fire inspector gives the notice and said this, gives the notice of the decision to the person alleged in violation and to the party who made the report. Clear to me, the fire shall, the fire inspector shall make a determination that shall be final. Kind of find what's final, I don't know.
Okay. Anything else in thirty-two?
It's a little permanent, though, fine.
Uh, the person, the fire inspector, so the person determines the violation, will have written order. Um, in thirty-two fourteen A, I think you can clarify it just a little bit. With a written order of alarm permit suspension. So we know that it's a suspension of the permit. Does that make sense to you?
A or B, where?
Where are we?
Oh, we're in A, thirty-two dash four A.
Four A or fourteen?
Uh, fourteen A, I'm sorry. What are we suspending? Are we suspending the person, or are we suspending the permit?
Of permit suspension?
With a written order of permit suspension, I would just inject permit before suspension there.
Is everybody okay with that?
Or suspension of the permit.
It's clearer, it's clearer.
Yeah. Uh, I had a question on three business days being enough. If you deposit in the postal, postal service.
Three days after it's put into mail.
Five business days.
Wait a minute, it, this is, sorry. Somebody has violated something having to do with an alarm. Why do you wanna give them five days to let them know that their permit has been suspended?
What's wrong with we on that, sorry?
Five, thirty-two dash fourteen A.
Eight last words.
Second sentence.
I'm just, I'm just thinking of the, sometimes the mail, sometimes it's fast, sometimes it isn't. Three, three business days after it has been deposited with the US Postal Service, so you bring it to the post office. Say on Monday, Tuesday, by Thursday, and if they don't get it. All right, I mean, we'll leave it free, if they, if they don't get it, then they will come and yell and scream.
Postal service, you know, it's out of our hands. We didn't do it. No control of the post office yet. I'm working on it, though.
Anybody else, anything in thirty-two?
I, I have just, just a question about, and possibility of clarifying B a little bit. Uh, thirty-two dash fourteen B. In the last two lines, it says, uh, requiring a permit issued pursuant to this chapter and cease all operations conducted under the authority, the authority of any permit issued pursuant to this chapter. My question was, what if the alarm service company is the entity in violation? Does that mean all the alarms they service need to be suspended, or just the one in violation?
I believe it's the permit, and I believe the permit is to a specific address.
Individual or business.
We're at five minutes tonight, and I said we would complete by nine o'clock. So we have five more minutes. Anybody, anything else in chapter thirty-two?
Thirty-two seventeen, I have it over here. Oh, there's a, uh, the last sentence, a separate offense shall be deemed committed, then there's a comma, upon each day during, you don't have to, you need that comma there.
Separate thing shall be deemed committed, upon each day during which.
There's no need for it.
Committed. What, so what do you have?
Just drop the comma.
Which comma?
The one after committed.
Separate offense shall be deemed committed upon each day.
There's two commas after the two words committed.
Let's take out the first one, leave the second one.
Yes, leave the second one, yeah.
Separate offense shall be deemed committed upon each day during which violation occurs or is committed, comma.
That's all I had on it.
Okay, that's it, the connection. Um, it would be very helpful if in future chapters, you could send me your comments beforehand, so that they can be incorporated or responded to, particularly when they are grammatical, spelling, handwriting, non-substantive. Such substantive comments are what we wanna talk about here.
Well, I've found that I can, I can make changes from what you sent me on my computer. And I can save it on my desktop and send it to you, but, um, in terms of the different colors, like, I was, I was doing that to the document you sent me, and it was coming out in gold.
Well, I like gold.
Okay, but I didn't know if it was doing that, like, a default color, or because red was already being used, 'cause I'm not that computer.
Yes, they'll use a different color for.
So it was doing automatically?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll just keep doing it that way.
So, since we didn't get through dogs, um.
I had a lot with dogs.
Do you have a lot with dogs?
Well, I mean, I, I didn't even, there's just, how, there's just a lot of, um, the, uh, commas being used incorrectly or not at all, or, uh, it was just written. So I'll just deal with it, home on the computer.
And substantive.
No, it's just all.
Sadly, I'm old school, I can't edit on a computer screen. I have to print it out and scratch all over it.
Yeah, well, that's.
Good, that's.
Do we wanna spend another ten or fifteen minutes on finished dogs, no?
Oh, it's not gonna, dogs is gonna, based on the, um, sorry. Based upon the discussions that we have on dogs, I think we're going to, to need more time in five or ten minutes.
Could you just jot down one thing that I have on that, it's just, there should be something added about cleaning up. There's something that's related, but not really specific, so that, I can send it to you.
On which?
On dogs. On the dogs, that's the only thing that I had, I'm not getting, I'm not the grammatical person.
So the, um.
I'll send it to you, or else we'll keep going.
That'd be great. Um, a possibility, um, we did three chapters tonight, they were three of the easiest chapters I could find.
I think we spent way too much time, like you said, on, on punctuation and.
Yeah, we want, we wanna discuss substantive, substantive issues here, and making it more readable. If it is really, if the sentence is not understandable, yes. If the sentence is understandable, but bulky or awkward, just, we'll just leave it as it is. Um, so a possibility, um, the next meeting would normally be February fifth. We could meet, um, two weeks from tonight to go through dogs, since you've already reviewed dogs. Um, and I could send you another chapter, but it's only, so, so today is the fifteenth, that would be the twenty-ninth. It would be two weeks from tonight, and then there would be another meeting on February fifth, which is one week after that. What do you wish to do?
Well, I wanna keep pulling your way, and I'll do it every week.
Could we just have a meeting next Tuesday?
Beforehand?
I don't know.
Or next Tuesday, we don't have a meeting.
Well, that's, do we have a meeting scheduled for next Tuesday?
No, it's the third Wednesday, third Tuesday, no meeting.
I'm good with going on the, the twenty, unless you wanna do both, the tw, next Tuesday and the twenty-ninth.
I'd be glad to do that.
Fran, is the, is the room available? Well, actually, we could use the small room.
Yeah, we could, I mean, we could, we could, if need be, we could use the.
Can we fill in a small room? Can we fill in the small room, okay?
Yeah, you can fill in the small room. So, um, so we'll meet on the twenty-first at, can we start at seven?
On the Tuesday, I believe.
On Tuesday, yeah, I can do that.
So we'll, we'll do the twenty-first at seven, and then we'll do the, um, twenty-ninth at seven thirty. So it's next Tuesday and then two weeks from tonight. And I'll get you one, one, I'll get you a couple more chapters, and we'll go through in, in a reasonable order. Dogs will be first.
So we're doing seven thirty next Tuesday?
Seven o'clock next.
Why don't you give us enough for.
Seven thirty to follow.
Give us enough so that we, you know, say we're going through it either way we can do.
One other thing that I, I hate to ask this of you, but it's necessary for the grant, I need timesheets. If you could keep track of how much time you spend at home, reading, making comments, and at these meetings, that would be most helpful. It, it assists me, our grant is in matching funds, and what we get is number, our number of hours at a, at particular rate, and we've gotta match those funds. And my thinking is that we're probably going to be in the range of thirty thousand dollars. And the, the reason for the thirty thousand dollars is CMMR and P and D are going to be, um, big.
Do you need days or just eight hours, cumulative, you need days?
I have no idea how many hours I spent on, I mean, I can guess.
Guess, slow reader.
Guess from what you've already done.
So, so just to clarify what you said, or what we were all, so we should just concentrate on edits on.
Substantive, Matt, yes.
We can do, as I read it, I can be editing it if I find profit, I should correct them online or write them down. But we're gonna concentrate on talking only about anything substantive.
Village, um, what was it, village board versus village clerk? I mean, it sounds like a nit, but to me, it's not a decision that I can make, you folks, I by myself can make. You have to decide that that's what you wanna do.
Wait, what? I'm, I'm not following you.
The last comment we made on chapter, whatever it was.
Thirty-two.
Will we change village board to village clerk?
Right.
That kind of permit. That's the kinda stuff that we need to discuss.
Okay. Thank you all so much, I know this is tedious, and I appreciate your efforts. Next Tuesday?
I got the dates.
Great.
The twenty-first at seven, the twenty-ninth at seven thirty.
Right.
Is there gonna be a motion to adjourn, or it's not that kind of a workshop?
I don't think we need a motion.
Fine.
Are you gonna set up the next set of chapters?
I will.